Howdy, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Today is Tuesday, October 12th. The time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. And we are convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room, and I will be out and announce work session when we've concluded the executive session. Thank you very much. Howdy, everyone. We have adjourned from executive session, and we are going to be convening into work session. The time is 6:23 PM, and we will be in the first-floor conference room.
And you'll be like a 16 next week.
This is the rowdy bunch in here right now.
And you'll lose that anyway.
Well, it's just, I almost hit 200 pounds. Like, that's the biggest I've ever, ever, so I'm trying to... I feel very comfortable with myself in a 185, and if I skip back to there, everything will fit like it's supposed to. But I had, I found some 15 and a half in shirts that I looked like dropping them. When I tried it on, I was like, nope, that's gotta go.
All right, everybody, the time is 6:25. The time is 6:25. We're convening into work session.
I just want to know if Allison made you a question?
She did. Work session.
Item A is regarding agenda items. Couple of notes. We have, we're gonna move the update on the social media policy to the next council meeting. Hannah's out sick today. She's the creator and kind of the brainchild of that, so we wanted her to be present to talk to us about it and answer questions. So, work session, item D, as well as agenda, item 10, will be moved to the next council meeting. In addition, consent agenda item C has been requested to be pulled and considered separately. Does anybody have any other questions on our agenda time?
So, C being pulled, are we, can we discuss that in here and talk about this? Or does that have to be discussed?
So, I had a, so I had two separate council members asked to pull item C from the consent agenda and have it discussed on the floor.
Okay.
So, there will be a presentation from Mindy on that. I had to look down to see. So, Mindy will be presenting to us out on the floor. Any, anything else? All right. So, yeah, our consent agenda is gonna consist of A and B. Let's see. Next, B is review of the council code of conduct and house rules. I've been really struggling with how to present this, so I'm gonna start off just by simply going over our house rules. We went over these back in, well, essentially every time we meet, and work in fifth Tuesdays and/or at our retreats. So, just to remind everybody, our house rules are gonna treat each other with respect. This includes the council, our fellow members, the staff and citizens. We're gonna start with trust. What you see, what you see is what you get. Don't suspect motives or agendas. Be open and direct in your communications with no hidden agendas or personal comments to others. And we've gotta agree to disagree. We're not all gonna vote on everything every time all the same. So, it's, we will have disagreements, but that's part of the legislative process. There's never gonna be an absolute. We won't have threats, and we won't engage in personal attacks or shaming of others. We need to listen to others. We need to try to understand others' points of view before we judge, and we won't interrupt. And there's, so, you know, just, these are very straightforward. We're gonna speak to the topic. We're gonna focus on the issue. We're gonna be precise with no grandstanding. Please ask your questions. That's, you know, we're here to ask questions, but when you get the answer, accept the answer. If you have questions about it, it's okay to go back and ask for clarification, but keep the other points in mind, you know, about being respectful and direct and understanding the answer. You may not like the answer, but that, that is the answer. And keep in mind, when we decide on an issue, keep in mind, we're doing this for the best of Capella. We're not doing it for personal agendas. We're not doing it for isolated groups. We're doing it for all 40,000 of our residents. We are all elected to represent everyone. We don't represent districts. We don't represent regions. We don't represent the people that live on Allen Road. We represent all of Capella. I picked that one on purpose, by the way. You know, and we've always said we need to vote and move on. It's very important to let what's happened, happen, and not dwell on the past. We've gotta respect the opinion and support the vote of majority even if you are in the minority. That's the, that is the American way of doing business. The majority has the say, and it's the will of the majority. And be responsible for your behavior. Control yourself and follow the house rules. Just a couple of the things that we came up with this summer, you know, we wanna continue doing what we've been doing. We wanna respect each other. I, I really enjoyed being down at TML with, with everybody, both staff and council. There was so much respect in our, in our dinners and meetings and going to the events that it just really showed that we do have a lot of respect for each other. We need to continue doing that. It's very important to share our viewpoints. It's important to let everyone know where you stand. You know, the previous item that we just talked about is a good example. This is not a straightforward topic. You know, that was a very, that's a very hard one, and it's good to let everybody know where you stand. And we need to listen to the different viewpoints, you know. I don't think there's anyone in the room that's gonna know everything about everything, so it's good to listen and, you know, we draw on the strength of others. And I'm really big into the forward-looking concerns, you know, identifying the things that are gonna affect the Capella of the future. That's where we stand. We're the 40,000-foot group. We're looking for the future. We're looking out for what's gonna be the next turn in of Capella. We're not down at the three-foot level with the hands in the dirt, but we're, we're setting the guidance for the future. And most importantly is, is keep a positive attitude. You know, this, you know, I got an email from a lady, and if I'd, I had to step back and take a look at it. It was, it was not, it was very critical, and as I read it, it was like, I really had to take a deep breath. I responded to her, and fortunately, she said, "Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time out to respond to me." So, you know, it was just that little positive attitude on her part made me feel so much better. And then be optimistic and open-minded. You know, there, like I said, I don't think anybody has got all the best ideas every time, so we need to be open. We need to listen to others, and we gotta keep an open mind about other opportunities and other possibilities. So, one of the things that I've been working on is, there's several responsibilities that I have as mayor. One of them is to run the meeting. And by the way, all of these items are in our charter. They're either in the city charter, or they're in the state code. But the mayor of the city is, one of the responsibilities is to run the meeting, and to run the meeting means to make a decision. So, if I'm ever pushing you for a decision like I was trying to do during the work session, it's because that's what, one of my job, that's my primary responsibility. It's not to make the decision. You guys have the vote. I don't. But it is my responsibility to make sure that you make that decision. So, in keeping with that, it's also my responsibility to make sure that we make that decision as efficiently and as expediently as possible. So, if I'm ever pushing you to kind of move on, to, you know, continue on, it's because I'm not wanting us to waste our time on topics. And the, and the third thing that I'm specifically responsible for is making sure that we maintain decorum, and that we follow state laws and rules, including our own rules by the city of Capella. And just, if anybody's curious, one of the, one of the caveats in our city charter is that we will follow Robert's Rules of Order. And there's a lot of latitude in Robert's Rules, and if we were gonna go for, follow a very, very formal set, we could. I mean, we absolutely can do that. This council, over the past 25, 30 years, has adopted a rather collaborative and informal way of working on the, working through Robert's Rules. And a lot of times, the things that we do are allowed through Robert's Rules, although they are not following the most strict form of the rule-making themselves. One of the things that the Robert's Rules does say, if it's a majority opinion of the council, then you can basically do, take any exception to the rules that you want to. Just to give you a good example, one of the things that we routinely do, and I don't wanna see a change, is that you guys will wave at me to speak, and I'll write your names down in the order that I see you speak. Formally, under Robert's Rules, you're not allowed to ask for permission until the previous person has yielded the floor. So, this keeping of the little list of names technically is, is something that Robert's Rules wouldn't follow, but this council has clearly operated in that mode, and I don't see any reason not to continue doing that. But that's just a, you know, that's just one of the, the little caveats that we've adopted through custom and tradition, which is completely fine. So, I, I'm wanting some discussion here to, you know, how are we gonna move forward with our, with our behaviors and our decision-making process? How are we gonna get better? How are we gonna make the Capella, you know, the better place for, for the future? Help me to understand what you want, how you want me to run the meeting. Don, I'm gonna call on you, 'cause you've got a big grin on your face.
'Cause he just had a big piece of chocolate cake.
I did not raise my hand. One thing that has helped me recently, I heard somebody describe it this way, that we have an agenda, and the purpose of the agenda is to get through the agenda. That's, that, the purpose of the meeting is to get through the agenda. And that probably helped, I don't know why it helped click, make things click a little bit, but it sort of, it helped, you know, that's, we're supposed to go through A, B, C, and D, and the intent is to get through that agenda and be done with the meeting, right? That's the intent. And so, we do legwork in work session and other places, preparing for things to be on the agenda. So, I don't know if that's, I mean, that's not so, so much a suggestion as much as an observation in, you know, the last three or four months of how to approach these, these meetings and how we approach the discussions and doing legwork, either individually outside of the meeting or in, in work session, you know, coming up and having some of these discussions. And then, not completely, but by the time you get sorted to the agenda, it's time to decision the agenda, one way or the other, positive or negative.
Yeah. And, and the agenda is actually called out by state statute, you know, under this, part of it is the Texas Open Records Act. There's actually a part of it that falls under Robert's Rules of Order, but then the state really supersedes most of it, and Mr. Hager can get really down into the gory details if you want him to. But the agenda is really prescribed that we have to tell the public what we're gonna talk about. We have to follow that agenda. There are exceptions, like we can defer, delay, move to another meeting, but we have to be very clear that we're doing that, and those items will be posted on the next meeting. But you're right. The, the purpose is to get through and make decisions on the agenda. It's to, you know, this is the decision-making body of the city. That is what you were elected to do. That's what your purpose is. My honest, it's to make the hard decision that no one else wants to, to make. You were voted to represent your, with the city. Brianna?
Just to make, make sure, I felt like you asked two questions, but your last question was about your role, and your first question had to do with us as a council?
Well, my role is really clear. It's very, it's very called out in the city charter.
Agreed.
There's a lot of latitude, though, on how I do it.
Right.
I mean, I can, you know, we can, we can have a collaborative environment, that we talk together. Work session is a wonderful example. This tends to be the most casual and informal session that we have. And it doesn't mean that we don't make decisions in here. We do, but they're typically not binding decisions, and that's kind of the caveat.
And I guess so, I, and I would agree with that. I mean, I think you did a good job of describing your role, and I think you've done well at that. I mean, I think it's a lot of facilitating, facilitating the conversation, making sure everybody is heard, right, and that there is that collaboration. But at the end of the day, too, at the end of that particular topic, making sure that staff has direction and that you're hearing from majority of council on where we're headed, right? And so, if we're, you know, whatever that may be, getting those four nods, if not more, on where are we headed, 'cause otherwise, we could be at a standstill and not get anything, and we're not gonna move forward. So, I do agree that a lot of that is too, and, and just making sure that there is, that we continue to stick to the topics at hand, or we can also go in different directions. I think, first of all, I appreciated you reading through the code of conduct. We go through this at every retreat, and we ask the question, or the question is usually asked of, is there anything we wanna change? Is there anything that doesn't make sense? Is there anything that we wanna talk about? What exactly does this mean for each one? And I've been through several rounds of this, and, and I feel like a lot of times, we hear it, and we think it's common sense, and so we just kind of move on, and there's really not much discussion. The problem is that I don't feel, and this is just me speaking, that we're really adhering to this in many aspects. And, and I'll start with the, you know, I'll start with number two. I, I don't think we're starting with trust, unfortunately. And I think a lot of that has come out in different conversations, and I, I think that as a result, there's, and again, this is just my perception, 'cause I do think that, I've been through enough councils and served over enough people, that there always has been a spirit of collaboration. And I just think that, I feel like right now, we lack trust. I feel like sometimes we don't listen to others. I feel like a lot of times, we're, we're not able to just move on. We, we can't just decide things and move on. And, and I would love to understand how we can actually move forward. Like, why are we struggling with these particular issues? And I don't know if anybody else has seen it, or if it's just me, but it's a matter of how do we find a way to work well together? Because I can tell you right now, this is my first time on council to feel like we're in a situation of divisiveness and not collaboration. And it really is disheartening, because we are here to serve all the people of Capella, and, and not necessarily any particular group of people, anybody from a particular street or neighborhood or anything otherwise. Our job is what's in the best interest of our city and our community, and that's what we were elected to do. And so, this is my first time in my history of serving that I have felt that we're just not where we should be as a council. And, anyway, I, I felt like we've had some of these conversations, and we're doing it in open session, so the question is, how do we move forward from here, or what do we need to do to move forward? Or does anybody else feel like I do, or is it just me that's feeling this way?
Kevin?
So, as, as a rookie told, not as much a rookie, but, um...
But, um... The respect already is there.
For, for me, you know, this is definitely a new environment, so I don't have anything, you know, as, as you've talked about your previous experiences and stuff. One thing that I think that is a little daunting is, I do hear the phrase a lot, "This council has historically done this," or "decided this," and stuff. And, I don't know, there's part of me that, you know, that has, you know, have we, you know, this council now, has everyone felt like they had an opportunity to, to speak up and have their say about maybe things that they would like to see done differently and stuff like that? Because I think, you know, there's legacy that comes into play, and I think historically, this has been a great council, but it's not this council. It's not made up of these, these seven council members and mayor that we have now. So, I, what I would love to see is, when we talk about starting with trust, has everybody had an opportunity, has, has everybody spoken their truths out to make sure that they are being heard and make sure that, that, you know, I think, and understanding the difference between being heard and having a majority of people that agree with you. I, I think that that's a big, a big difference right there. So, that's my big thing, is I just wanna make sure that people feel like, that, and I do feel like people have had a voice in the meetings, but I don't know if they've spoken their truth out or felt comfortable enough to speak their truth out. So, that's, I just want everybody, I wanna provide a collaborative environment where people do feel comfortable, you know, saying how they feel, and they, they feel like they can say it openly, and not feel like there's gonna be any judgment or criticism or anything like that. So, that's my, my thought on it, so.
You wanna expand or expound a little bit on a comment that you made about how we don't necessarily have to do things like previous councils have done?
Yeah, I mean, that, we're, we're a fresh council. I mean, and I, I think it's good that we, you know, discuss, you know, like, code of conduct, for example. I, I love the work that's been done, but do we have buy-in from everyone in this particular council? And that, that's kind of what I'm getting to, is that, is, I think a lot of work has been done by previous councils. I, I don't wanna discount any of that, but do all eight people on this, this council, do they all buy into that? And if they don't, we, we probably need to have further in-depth conversation, exercise how we can come together as council, as that, that group. And that's, that's what I mean by that, is...
Okay, thank you. Brianna?
I think that's what I was saying, is we, we bring this up at retreat every year, right? But if there's not buy-in, then why aren't we having conversations about it? Right?
Exactly.
Because if we're not gonna have conversations about it, then there's an assumption that it's a buy-in, and so therefore, we should adhere to this. But if there is a buy-in, then let's talk about it.
Agreed.
So, yeah.
Well, spoken very well.
Cliff, you have anything you wanna say?
Yes. I do. I, I see nothing wrong with the house rules. I have it for the last seven years. Following the house rules is critical. And I would ask you, because you have the power, based on the, you know, the documents, to keep us in check as it relates to the house rules at the minimum, and the other rules that we've agreed to as a council. And so, I, I'll support you because you've got the power to do it. I mean, you're the one that can say, "No, we're not gonna do that. Yes, we're gonna do that. Okay, let's move along." And the charter gives you that. So, you know, we all probably need to step it up, you know, and be more conscious of this, the house rules, and, and stick with it. Or, if you, if you don't buy in as a council person, then let us know, let the mayor know, and we'll talk about it.
Thank you. Mark?
I really have no issues with, with the house rules. Just like Cliff said, you know, the near seven years, and I think the way we functioned has, has been fine, and I think we've been successful. But I, I do wanna hear from other council members if there's things you think we oughta change. I mean, if there's, there's nothing wrong with trying to improve, and if there's a better way to do something, then by all means, speak up and, you know, you may have six other heads saying, "Yeah, that's a great idea."
And I think that goes into the open-mindedness and willing to listen, so, thank you. John? You have anything?
No.
Don?
I was just gonna say, one thing that helps me is when I understand, and I try to ask this of myself also, what is, what is the objective? What is sort of the end game of whatever the discussion is? In fact, well, something we discussed last time even. I know Mark said something that, even though we, I think we were on sort of opposite sides of that, that particular issue, he said something that made me think, okay, well, now I at least understand what, where his head is, or what, what is his end game, what his objective is. And that, so if you're just asking like, what types of things, explaining, rather than just explaining, I wanna do X or Y sometimes, what is sort of the objective, but that I'm particularly trying to get to. And I try to ask the same thing of myself also, if, okay, am I just filling up the room with air by debating this and really don't have any objective, or do I really have sort of an end game in mind, in mind here? And one of the things that I know you've said is the, the whole, what, short-term decision has long-term implications. That goes back to the objective. What's sort of, like, what are we trying to get? What am I trying to get to with my vote or with my opinion and everything? So, that's just something that personally helps me when I, when I hear other people talk about what their objective is, too.
Every short-term decision has long-term consequences. There you go. Bijan, you haven't heard from you?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
So, whoa, both, both of those went up at the same time?
I'll have him go with him first.
Kevin?
All right. So, I'm just gonna call it out.
Yay, 'cause I was going to too.
I'll do it. I know you two gentlemen had an issue with something that happened at the last meeting at the very end about things like that. I think every other council member has spoke up, and we talked about code contact. We're gonna talk about council agenda requests and things like that. I know I jumped a little bit, but I want to hear from you guys. I want to make sure that I understand where your head is at, because that's gonna help me be a better council member and help us function better as a council. And even if it's like, why are we even talking about this? I would love to hear that from you guys, just so I know where we are on the same page. I'm, that's where I am.
Brianna?
I mean, is there, I'd love to know that you guys have buy-in. I mean, you talk about not commenting on anything, but when I talk about lack of trust, I, I don't believe you guys have trust in us, and your, your, you know, your recent request is one of them. And so, we just need to understand, how can we, how can we, we're, we're trying to collaborate, and how do we get there? If, if these rules aren't what you think, they, like, they don't make sense, we shouldn't follow them, you have an issue with them, like, help us understand that, or if there's something we do differently? 'Cause again, like you said, yeah, things may have worked in the past, but everyone's different, and we're a new council, and we're willing to make changes. But how do, how do we get there? How do we, how do we remove How do we, how do we remove the elephant in the room?
So to that point, I'll have issue, I mean, I'll have questions on item number C, which is discuss council agenda request process.
I'll have that too. So I'll, I'll say something then. While we're on code of conduct, we, our city ordinance, Article 1-13 Code of Conduct, Section 113-1 policy, it says, "Public confidence and respect can be best promoted if all public officials and employees, whether paid or unpaid, whether elected or appointed, will uniformly treat all citizens with courtesy, impartiality, fairness, and equality under the law." Mike? Is there anyone in the city of Capel that you or the staff do not provide these courtesy, impartiality, fairness, or equality under the law?
I provide complete transparency to all the information that's requested. I treat all the council members the same. I provide information, and when council member asks information, I provide it to the rest of the council. If there's a particular issue, I'd be happy to talk about it.
The question was, is there anyone in the city of Capel where you or the staff do not provide with courtesy, impartiality, fairness, or equality under the law?
Do you feel like right now, I feel like it's a deposition?
No, I'm just, it's just a question.
Well, I've answered the question, and the answer to the question is, I'm not aware of anybody who is treated in...
So the answer is no?
Okay.
Is it?
No. Okay. I'm so sorry, I need to say something.
Kevin?
Right now, I felt like we just sat, like, we were sitting in a courtroom and then there is a council member, John, you have a very accusatory tone and it, it makes you sound like he's done something to break the law. It, it, based on the way that you framed...
Councilman Nevels, I asked a simple question. I asked a simple question. And I, it was a yes or no question, and he answered something else. I was just asking him, is it yes or no?
But do you not hear your tone and the way that you speak to people? It makes people feel like garbage when you talk to them like that. You have done that to our, oh, yes. Okay. You have treated staff like that. You have treated, addressed other people on the dais like that. You have now just addressed our, our city manager like that. And it's, it's uncomfortable to me. And I know I'm, I'm new at all this, but there is a certain decorum and respect that comes with running a, a city that I, I love very dearly and the staff members that make this thing happen on a daily basis. And I'm not grandstanding, I'm so sorry, but it, it, it frustrates me. Welcome.
Sorry, go ahead. Hey, hey, just real quick, okay.
Go ahead, Brianna.
No, I guess I would love to understand what's the purpose of that question? So you read something there, what was the, what was the purpose of the question?
The purpose was whether they're, they have, they have to treat everybody with impartiality, fairness, equality under the law.
Okay.
That was the question.
And so are you implying that he's broken the law?
He said, he said, he said, no.
What are you, what are you getting at? That's what I would love to understand, John.
Hey, code of conduct actually applies to all of us, right?
Exactly, everybody. And the thing is that, and the thing is that it's this, it's this constant type of behavior that is extremely unprofessional. It really truly is. And, and a lot of times when you have something to say in that way, and a lot of times it's directed at Mike, a lot of times it's directed at staff members, you speak to them with, without following any of that, without respect, without care, without any of that. And they are, they are our staff. They are also citizens of our community.
Yep.
And you don't, and you don't do that. So you don't even do what you expect of others. And so I guess my thing was, what was the purpose of that question?
You said, "I don't do what I expect of others." What is that?
What I'm saying is, you're saying what you just read right now, that you were asking Mike if he's done or not, of treating everyone with respect and everyone equally, you don't do that.
Okay.
You personally do not do that. I'm not even going to ask you the question. I'm just going to say, you don't do that.
Okay. Do you feel that way or understand?
I do.
Okay.
I really do. Because if it has to do with your agenda and your item and whatever is important to you, you will do that. But you don't do that across the board. And that is unacceptable and it's unprofessional.
Okay.
And so, and, and that's why we're, God, you go.
Very good conversation. We need to get these things out on the table, but I got to remind us of our code of conduct. We're getting very accusatory.
Whoa, let it finish.
No. I, I'm very serious about our code of conduct.
My apologies.
And, and it, but, but it's equal for everybody. There, there are some, there are some very valid points that, that I think that she's made as well. Uh, Kevin did. Um, I'd really like to hear from Bijou though at this time.
Like I said, I don't have any issues with the code of, um, code of conduct. I have questions about the process that, uh, on, on item number C.
Okay.
Can I ask John a question?
Um... Let's get back to item C in just a moment. Yes, you may.
So John, do you suspect that he may have treated someone unfairly?
Well, he, he asked her, no.
No, but I'm asking you, just to, hon- honestly, do you suspect he has? Has someone told you that maybe they haven't been treated fairly? And that's why you're, you're, you're probing on it?
Yeah.
I'm glad you're, you're straightforward with me here.
Yeah.
So, um, it was, I, I guess I, I asked two questions, you know? Is it something you think or is it something that you've been told by somebody that they were treated?
When I got elected, Mike told me straight up, "There are two type two people in this city that we do not treat the same way." Today, the answer was, "No, we don't." So, okay. I mean, if that's the answer, that's the answer I'll take.
And I, 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 I hear what you're, I hear what you're not saying.
I'll do that then.
Yeah.
So would you expand on what you were told back when you first got elected?
No, I don't need to at this moment. I mean, I don't need to do that.
Okay. This is where the openness and discussion comes forward and, and helps a lot in letting us understand what's driving your motivation.
I don't have a motivation. I just asked a question and he gave me an answer, okay? Quite from what I was initially told, but okay. I'll take it as that.
Now, I think in defense of John, that probably we shouldn't be naming specific people in, in this public forum.
That's, that's correct. That's actually multiple places in our charter as well as the state charter. Okay.
But...
Brianna?
I think for me, so I, I hear you. You're obviously, there's, there's something that's underlying there that, that's causing what I am perceiving as animosity, resentment, whatever it may be, whatever you want to call that emotion. And I guess the question is, how do we resolve that?
Not what he told me today.
I'm not, I'm not feeling the tension in the room has been reduced any.
I don't have any tension.
So, Brianna?
No, I didn't, I didn't have anything.
Okay. So I'd like to go back and stay with our, our House Rules of Conduct and stay with those and just hope and pray that we all remember those every time we interact with, with ourselves, with each other, and with the public. All right.
Wait, Kevin has something?
Just one, one last, one last comment, sir.
Kevin?
I know, and, and I'll just put this on the table. If I ever get to the point where I am egregiously, you know, if there's anything where I'm not following, you know, these House rules, I would ask that my fellow council members call me out on that, whether that is privately, one-on-one, uh, I, you know, if, if there's an issue where I'm out. I, you know, if, if it's, if it's where I'm putting someone on the spot, call me out on the dais, try to stop, like, that's how I would, I, because, you know, people get passionate, they get caught up in things and I don't want to... So I know that's how I want to be treated, but I don't know how everyone else wants to be treated because I, I don't know if everyone has been open about that. So I, I'm, I'm not sure if that's something we have time for in, in this particular thing, but I know personally, if I'm going down that road, I want somebody to call me on it. Like, hey, this is not productive. This is not getting us where we need to go. This is not moving the ball forward, uh, helping us complete the agenda as, as, as Don said. So I don't know if everybody has individual, you know, preferences or if we agree as a council, like, what is our policy to please ourselves?
So there is a very, very easy method of doing that. And it's called a point of order.
Mm-hmm.
And anyone can interrupt with a point of order. And you state your point of order without naming names. And then the chair, the mayor, then rules on the, on the point of order. If anybody can, uh, uh, disagrees with my ruling, then that person can appeal the mayor's, uh, opinion and it goes to a vote of the council. And then that vote is binding and I would, I have, I am forced or required to adhere to the, to the will of the council at that point. So I, I, you know, that's, that's just a little caveat, but, um, I think, you know, just a point would be well made.
Excellent.
Brianna?
Mayor, I felt like, um, and I, first of all, Councilmember Nevels, I appreciate that, right? We all have a different way of how we handle things.
Work session, call me Kevin.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. There, there's one, there are ways that we all handle things, right? I, I would also want to be called out, told, right, pull me aside, whatever it may be, um, to say, hey, what you said or what you did or whatever it may be wasn't handled correctly. Um, I felt like that was what we were trying to accomplish with Marcel. And Marcel has come and worked with many a council members, many councils. And a, a part of it, and we do this at work too, right? Is you do these assessments so you understand your style and then help everybody else understand your style so that we can meet you where you're at. Right? And so I guess that's what we're trying to do here and, and it would be good to understand people's style. And that's why I felt like it was important to not only have the assessment at retreat, but also to have the follow-up meeting where we would talk through some of these things. Um, is how do we work well together? Because we all just, you know, come with different, um, ways of working together. Um, we're a different team, just like your work team in your, in your home group and family. So I guess all that to say is, it would be great, at some point, and I think we have another retreat in January, is to continue that conversation of how do you, how do you want to be brought along or informed if there's something that somebody felt wasn't part, that wasn't in compliance with our code of conduct?
And I think that will be a, a continuing discussion that we have at that retreat and probably between now and then as well. So, yes. Don, you're...
Don?
I have a turn.
Oh, okay. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Long?
Uh, we interrupted Bijou.
Yes, we did.
Uh, and so he, I would like for him to continue or wrap up his, because he talked about procedures. And so, you know, you just can't say procedures because procedures have been developed by us, by staff, by the city manager for a long time. And so if there are procedures that you don't like, that you would like to be changed, then we need to get them on the table at some point and talk about it. Because, you know, the, the procedures that the staff puts together, we accept, you know, by working with those procedures. And so that, if that, if that's, you know, if that's the big issue, then, you know, we need to talk about it. So you need to give us some specifics at some point.
Yeah, so that's item number C, right?
So, and that's, that's very specific to, to the council agenda request process. And it, it, for us, it's pretty simple. It's called out in the, in the charter. I mean, it's, it's, uh, Article 1-10-6.1.1. Um, very, it's, it's very specific. "All council members may submit agenda items. All items to be placed on the agenda must be submitted in writing to the city manager by 10:00 a.m. on the second Monday preceding the meeting at which he or she wishes the subject to be considered." Now, this is where, this is what I think the, the misunderstanding comes from. "Upon a majority vote of the council members, the city manager shall be required to place the item on the agenda of a regular meeting." So if you go on and read the next section, which is about citizens, it's very specific that the item goes to the work session first. And that's what any of, of you may have an agenda item placed on the work session agenda. And for it to move into the regular session of a city council meeting, it requires a, a majority vote of the, of the members.
Okay. Um, so can I ask a question to Mike?
Sure.
Yeah, Mike. Um, so we get council agenda 72 hours before the city council meeting, regularly on Friday evening or Friday afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
So can you explain to us the steps that you take to get the consent agenda and to the, to the mayor, then mayor approves? Can you describe that all process? When the staff, when does the staff prepare the agenda items to be placed on?
Sure.
On the, on the regular items?
So in the, the broadest sense, uh, there are certain things that we know are going to be coming up, let's say in November, right? So the November agenda already has some things on it, as an example. So tightening it down to, let's say, the preparation for tonight's agenda?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah, tonight's agenda. So, um, we ask the director if there's something that needs to be on the agenda item, if there's anything, you know, can, for example, social media policy, right? Kind of continue that for a while. So we carry those things forward. We put them on, we create a draft, we send it to the mayor. And the mayor reviews the draft of the agenda. If there's something that he has a question on or, you know, asked about, where's this particular item? Or if, you know, let's put this on the regular agenda as opposed to consent agenda, we receive that direction from him. Uh, then we put that together, we put the packet information together. Uh, and then on, we, Ashley's basically in control of the process. Uh, then Ashley pulls it all together, sends it out to y'all, posts it on the notice, and then we're, that's, that's the process.
Okay, so I want to put some dates or, or days that you start. So the previous week, Monday, for example, the directors come to you, say, these are the items?
They, they could have been putting things on the agenda two weeks ago, three weeks ago, four weeks ago. I, I don't know what's on the agenda until I see it at the same time as the mayor sees it as far as the Wednesday conversation.
Okay, so Wednesday is the day that you finalize, like, what are the consent agenda? What are the public hearing?
Well, I wouldn't say finalize. We, we, we have it all on the agenda as a draft. Then we send it out to the mayor at that point.
All right, so that's Wednesday?
That's on Wednesday.
Okay. Okay, so any day before Wednesday, you will be collecting all the items from the director?
Whatever, right. Because I don't know what contracts are going out there. I don't know what bids being out there, those kind of things. So, um, you know, we, we sometimes announce, say, okay, this project's going to be coming up in two weeks or, you know, whatever. So that, that happens?
Yeah, that answer, so that's where I'm going with it. So roughly starting Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, um, staff members know what's going to be on the agenda. We get it on Friday evening and we can ask questions before Tuesday council meetings. Sometimes, I know the preferred way here is to submit questions to you prior to the meeting, right? So the staff can research on the agenda item they already know is going to be on the council meetings, right?
Yeah, you, you may look at the packet, and this has happened in the past, you may look at that packet and you say, you know, I'd like to get X information that maybe isn't included, so we'll, we'll do that. Or I'd like a little bit more detail on that. And that's when, most of the time, you know, I'll say, okay, we got to ask this question, here's the information that was asked in advance. That, that's why we ask, because you may ask something that we just don't have. And if we can get it, that helps you on the Tuesday night... And if we can get it, that helps you on the Tuesday night so that you can make your decision. That's the purpose, it's none other than that.
Right, so to me, we are here on Tuesday meetings to have a lively discussion and debate on items on the agenda, right? So we may have questions to ask during that time. The reason could be a constituent asked us on Monday or Tuesday on a parklot before I walked in, hey, this is a question that I just heard from a constituent. I want to ask you that. We were not prepared, we didn't know the questions, right? So it's a form that if I ask that question, maybe 10 other people may have similar questions, same, you know, same question. So if you answer them on the dais, all those 10 people are listening in, or they can go back and replay the archive to get the answer from you directly, right? Instead of me telling the other person, hey, this is the answer my provided. So what is the mechanism that we can ask you questions on the dais so that the constituents can hear answers from you?
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding. You're asking questions about an agenda item?
Yes, for sure, for that, right? Also, the ones not on the agenda item, I want to get that too.
Well, let's stick with the agenda item. You can ask, you don't have to ask in advance. We just ask you to do that because it helps. We think it helps you and the rest of the council if there was a question about an agenda item, because they may have those questions too, so I can get that information. So when an agenda item comes up, council can ask any question anytime related to the agenda item as far as the meeting is concerned. I think the issue is, which we talked about on Friday, is if it's not on the agenda, I would defer to Bob, but if it's not on the agenda, it's not something that's supposed to be talked about. So you can ask a question, but it's not an agenda item, I'm not...
Right, so that's one of the issues.
But I don't know, I don't even, I don't know of a time when you just, this isn't like the UK, you know, I'm not the prime minister, we don't get to bounce questions, that's just not how the thing is set up. So I don't know of a way, I don't know of a way to do what you're saying from an agenda item in open meetings requirement. But I'm not the city attorney, I don't turn to Bob because...
Well, one of the things you struggle with, and it's an art, not a science, if, let's just say, for example, I've got a contract on the agenda with a change order. That seems where some of these questions come from. And if you have a change order that's, you know, a 10% increase and what's the facts and circumstances for that change order, you may then want to say, well, how is this different from something we did a month ago? That's an okay question, but what you did a month ago is over. So you can't go back and re-ask questions about that because it's not on the agenda. That project's not on the agenda. You can ask a clarification, how is this different from the change order we considered the last time? And then the staff member, Mike's going to say, this one's different because that was a change order for circumstances because of soil conditions, this is a change order for something else, the process is the same. That's not okay for you to go back and talk about that project. You got to talk about this one. And that's sometimes where you get balled up because you're trying to understand what's different. That agenda item's not on, or that item is not on this agenda, this item's on this agenda. So you have to bring your question back to that.
Right, so I'll give you specific examples, hopefully you can clarify. You know, last time we had the discussion about the reports, that you have updates on the city projects, what's going on. Before I walked into the city hall for the city meeting, the parents stopped me at the parklot and asked me, pointing at the Parkway and Denton Tap, hey, this is thrown out for a long time, my kids are walking through Parkway to high school, they are concerned affairs. How long is it taking this to fix this? I didn't have an answer at that time, when exactly are we going to finish that project? So I just heard that from, you know, concerned affairs walking into a city council meeting. So what is the mechanism or do we have anything, if city manager is updating a project specifically Denton Tap, how do we ask the follow-up post, hey, Mike, I just heard from a president, when are we going to finish this? There are citizens concerned about this. A follow-up question, do you mind?
Well, it's difficult because I don't know what Mike's going to talk about.
Okay.
And so that's problem. And maybe what we need to do is start putting those, if he wants to give a report, he's not required to give a report, but if you, you've got some things on your agenda, how can I say this, that I would do personally differently? Okay, and I'm, as Lewis Nichols told me a long time ago, I'm free to express my opinion and you're free to ignore it, which, you're a lawyer, you're a lawyer, not everybody follows your advice.
So I want to get some clarification from you as well, about that.
But if, what I would recommend to keep this in check, if Mike or a staff member wants to give a report about a project, that that project is specifically on the agenda, and I will let you talk about or deliberate about that project. If it's just, we're bringing up stuff at the 11th hour, I don't think that's appropriate. And the reason is, is because the public is entitled to know, not you, not Mark, not me, but the public is entitled to be informed of what we want to talk about. Because if I don't know, we're going to talk about Denton Tap and Sandy Lake, I'm not watching tonight because I don't care. But if you're going to talk about Denton Tap and Sandy Lake, well, I got, I'm going to tune in, or I'm coming to the meeting. That's the purpose of the Open Meetings Act, and that's the purpose of the process of the agenda. If we're not informing the public of what we're discussing, we shouldn't be discussing it. Not because you don't want the answer or Mike didn't want to give it to you, it's because the public's entitled to the notice. If you need a question answered for a constituent, ask him before the meeting, ask him after the meeting, he can give you the answer, and you can get back to your constituent and give it. But you can't go out and deliberate about it because the public...
Correct, deliberation, we can't, right?
Deliberation is an exchange between members of the council, a member of the council and the staff...
However...
And the public.
Let me just clarify with you, okay? I understand that you, according to the Open Meetings Act, right, 551.041, it says that you have to put notice of the date, hour, place, subject of each meeting held by the governing body. I understand that. The next section, 551.041.5, also talks about reports about items of community interest regarding which no action can be taken, which basically is what Mike is reporting at the report, right? Because it is a community interest about public projects, constructions.
It could be.
Okay.
Could be.
So that's why he doesn't list exactly what it is, except that he reports it. It's a community interest that he could go...
And you start deliberating and debating?
Not, I'm not going there, I'm not going, I'm not talking about deliberating. It says that staff may, or may receive from staff, governing body may receive from staff, report about item community of interest during meeting without having given notice of the subject if no action is taken and possible action is not discussed during the information. But it also says inquiry made at the meeting, which is section 551.042, it says if at a meeting, a government body, a member of the public or of the government body inquires about subject for which notice has not been given as required by this subchapter, the notice provision of this subchapter does not apply to statements specifically, statements of specific factual information given in response. So in actuality, when he talked about projects, construction projects that's going on, we could have asked about certain things, that's not a debate, deliberation, asking for...
Look at the definition of deliberation.
We're not deliberating, I'm asking a question about...
What's the definition of deliberation?
Yeah.
Deliberation means an exchange between members of a governing body or a member of the governing body's staff about a matter of the public's business. That's the definition, I didn't write it.
I understand, this is right here. Inquiry says that exception is if he's giving back a factual statement about that particular thing, that's not a deliberation. So if he talks about construction, we're just asking that he's responding about factual statement that happens, that's not a deliberation.
But I don't know what you're going to ask.
But you never, but you never...
I know, when do you cross the rubicon? You ask the question or when he answers that? When does the deliberation take?
Correct me if I'm wrong, does this say that inquiry can be made under the section 551.042?
It says that, Mr. Jane, right?
Okay, so I'm saying that if this is inquiry about subject of which has not, which has not been given and required under this subchapter, the notice of this provision statement does not apply to statements, specific factual information given in response to the inquiry.
Well, that generally comes from the members of the public when they stand up, citizens comments and says, you know, I turned water on and it didn't come out, and what happened? And Mike can say, or a staff member can say, well, the water was cut off between 2:00 and 4:00 because of the main break.
Okay, all I'm saying is when he's reporting something that's of public interest, community interest, and we're just asking specific about that question, he could give a factual statement, that's not a deliberation.
But that's not a, his report is not under that exception. That's an exception that's different. That's an exception, a matter of public interest would be the Copell High School football team is going to play a game on Saturday night, and we would ask that all the citizens show up. That's a matter of public interest. The specific project's a matter of public business. That's just not a matter of public interest.
It is of public interest, what's going, how long that takes, what's going on with that? Okay, I'm not going to debate with you. I mean, okay, if you say that, that's fine.
I mean, that's the traditional interpretation because otherwise I get in the middle of your meeting. I don't want to be in the middle.
I understand.
And I want you to be able to fully exchange if we will put those items on the agenda. It's the unanticipated statement that we should call...
But his report is on the agenda item though.
If it says report on that project, why not just put the project on the agenda?
He put it on as an agenda item as a report of construction projects. Then if that's, that's on there, isn't it?
Is that public notice?
You tell me, is it?
I don't think it is. Because anything can be a public project, everything can be a public project. So how am I to know as a member of the public what we're going to report on? If the whole idea is to give public notice so that the public can find out about it, not you or me or whoever might show up at the meeting, because I don't know whether show up to meeting and that, my project may or may not be discussed. So the whole idea is to give the public notice so they may participate in attending.
So are you saying that what he reports on construction projects, when he puts on their reports on construction projects, that's not a public notice? Is that what you're saying?
I think it's an adequate public, in a first name.
Okay, okay. I mean, if you say that...
And I'm a strong advocate that I think you ought to put as much on the agenda as appropriate. If you'll notice, the public agenda items for the planning and zoning commission items is extensive, very big. And the reason is, is because they're required by law to be very big, and the reason is it's too required to get public notice.
Okay, I just saw that it was on there, he talked about it, that's why it's on there.
And for us to give an answer, my answer is, he's putting up ideas.
Okay. So item says, city manager reports, project updates, and future agendas.
Okay, so what are we going to talk about?
Right, we don't know what he's going to report.
That could be anything. Future agenda is whatever, I mean, that's pretty broad. Because you can put a lot of things on the agenda, how much in the future? That's where you get in trouble. And my job's to keep you out of trouble. So the more specific you are, the less trouble you get. And that's going to be my advice and always has been, so that's why those things make me crazy.
Bob, we're running out of time here real quick.
I had a question earlier when you were talking about like the example with a change order and kind of the type of questions that are asked. You were referring to specifically consent agenda items, right? Like where...
It didn't have to be...
Okay, well, I was just saying where it comes with the usually a limited information as far as like, this is a change order, we're coming, it's just a consent versus it's on the regular agenda, we're going to talk about like everything else. And I say that because if we want, if we want history on something that's on a consent agenda, like I would reach out to Mike and say, hey, I'd love more information about this so that staff is prepared with that information and it can be discussed maybe as part of the work session, agenda items, and then we can get more information and then make it part of consent agenda out there versus asking in-depth questions. I don't know, I was just asking for clarification.
Well, I was only trying to make a point, it's just because sometimes you need something to compare something else too.
No, I agree.
And it's okay to make the comparison, but it doesn't allow you to take the comparison and then go into great detail about a past item or an item that's not on the agenda.
Right.
Or you may have an issue with what's done, so...
Right, just trying to understand that. Because I was thinking of like Beechey, like that last time, the item with regards to lights, and you were asking if we had done another RFP, but the agenda was really, the item was a, an increase based on the change order and not necessarily a, a new RFP process, right? And that, so just talking about the difference between what's on the consent versus regular.
Because what's 149 on a contract...
Right, right, to 169.
And the agenda item was 179, 30,000 dollar difference.
Right, 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 gotcha.
So to some extent, the staff can help itself by being more specific if they want to have a project report, what projects those are. So that you know, and you know, and you can have some form of exchange without having to worry about whether or not I'm happy or we're violating the rules out, that was my concern. And allow citizens to have more detail on their agenda.
Thank you.
Some of it is just preference on how things get read and how they get posted. You know, as your lawyer, I like as much detail as I can get away with.
And so, and then I guess I have another question for clarification. So if in a meeting during Mike's report, if we're to say, Mike, you know, you touched on a couple of construction projects, but you didn't mention Parkway and Denton Tap, is it appropriate to say maybe like, could you give us status update now or is that something you might bring up at a later meeting versus having him do it and then running the risk of people starting to ask questions of that particular project? Because then we'll get into deliberation.
And say, I'll bring it up at a future agenda.
Because I think Mike...
Because my thing is to try to keep you out of as much trouble as possible for giving you a safe harbor.
Right, and I don't want to get into deliberation.
Is not to not give you the information and give it to you privately, because that's not an open meeting, but I can't do it if it's not on the agenda. And sometimes I've given you probably more latitude than I should. And then it gets to be a problem, and then you'll say, well, fuck meetings, tell us earlier. Because I don't like to interfere, this is your night, it's your meeting, it's not mine.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right.
I don't want to be...
Beechey, thanks for bringing that up, that was a very good sequence. It helps us all to understand. I learned some stuff listening to these two guys, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Mayor, for clarification, I guess, are we done with C or will we continue to talk about that as far as like how items get put on an agenda or...
I would be more than willing to continue that to a later meeting.
Yeah, we can do it at a later meeting.
And if that's the role of the council, because, I mean, everything Mike said is in the charter. I mean, he, it gets pretty mind-numbingly detailed about how that happens.
Okay, understood. So everything that goes on the work session unless there's a majority willing and Mike has direction and then put it on the regular agenda?
Well, if that comes as a request from a citizen or a council member, if it's something that's requiring a decision from the council, then it goes on the regular agenda.
Right, understood, okay.
All right, the time is 7:31, we are adjourned to work session, we'll convene in the regular session and bye-bye. Thank you, everybody. Bye.
Everybody, today is Tuesday, October 12th. We have concluded our work session. The time is seven thirty-six P M., and we are convening into the regular session of the Capel City Council. Just as a reminder, persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or the public hearings must sign in at the back table outside the council chambers and list their address of residence. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Sean McCombs, and he's representing Generate Life Church. So Pastor McCombs? Will everyone please rise?
Thank you, sir. It's an honor and a pleasure. Thank you. Can I get everybody to bow their heads, please, and we'll open in prayer? Lord, we just thank you for this time. God, we just thank you for your grace, for your love. Lord, we ask that, pray a blessing over the city of Capel. Lord, we lift up the mayor, and ask that you give him insight, give him strength, give him courage, give him knowledge to run this meeting. Lord, we also pray for each council member, that you also give them strength and knowledge and courage and insight to lead and run this city as you will. And God, we just ask that you just be here with us tonight, and be here with these people in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Item number six is our citizens' appearance. Ms., do we have anyone signed up for citizens' appearances? Thank you. So persons wishing to speak have signed the register and listed their residence address. Each speaker must state his or her name and their address for the record. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each, and individual speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of a majority of the council. Persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, the mayor, any individual, group, or corporation. Once the timer sounds at the two-minute mark, the city secretary will interrupt the speaker and make a request to the mayor and council to extend the time at the discretion of the council. So first to speak is Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the time tonight. I'm Dan Miller. I live at one forty-eight Levy Place in Magnolia Park. Tonight, I'm here to follow up on the August twenty-fourth meeting where you met with the Magnolia Park H O A board and Jeff Crandall, and there were some questions that were asked from Jeff Crandall, and we said we'd get back to you. This letter has been emailed to the council last night, and I just wanted to read it to you, read it to you. This is to the mayor and city council from Jeff Crandall of C C M Engineering. Mayor and city council, the purpose of this letter is to address a few questions that were asked and subsequent to the August twenty-fourth city council meeting at which I spoke. Three of the questions for trail, the trail option A, were as follows. Will the trail remove any significant trees? Will the trail destabilize the existing soils? And number three, the cost that I prepared was significantly lower than the city staff's cost estimate. Why? So to clarify these points, I'd like to add the following information. So one, the first, the response to the first question, will the trail remove any significant trees? We did not get a tree survey from the city, but I was able to walk the site two different times. There would be an adequate distance around any significant tree, twelve inches or larger, to construct the concrete trail. It will be necessary to remove some undergrowth and some small trees, four inches and smaller. Number two, the response to, will the trail destabilize existing soil? The concrete trail will not destabilize the soil. Rather, it will actually provide some improvements to the soil stability. Concrete is actually one of our options to provide erosion protection, therefore, there will be some improvement to the soil stability from the concrete trail installation. Three, the question was, the cost that I prepared was significantly lower than the city staff's cost estimate. Why? The original cost-
Your two minutes is up.
Okay, thank you. The original cost estimate by the city staff was much higher than ours, but their plan was to build a partially elevated boardwalk over the edges of the pond. To elevate the trail over the edges of the pond is significantly more expensive than a concrete trail on grade. So I hope this information is clear and helpful. My professional opinion is that the trail along the south side of the pond is the best option and merits your approval. Should you have any additional questions, I will be available to address them. Any questions from me regarding the trail options?
Mr. Miller, we routinely don't engage in a dialogue, but we would invite you to submit your questions to our staff, or us, by email outside of the council chambers. It's to keep us from getting into a runaway discussion. And I appreciate the presentation, and invite you to follow up with either us or the staff. And just to let you know, this item, I believe, is intended to be on the agenda on the twenty-sixth of this month.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate that. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the proposals from Magnolia Park. We really appreciate it.
Okay. And keep in mind, the date is still tentative until the agenda is published.
On the twenty-sixth. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Next up to speak is Kerry Miller.
That's my wife, and she's got the kids in bed, so she won't- She needs her health problem.
Thank you very much. Next up on the list is Mr. Thomas Burrows.
Thomas Burrows, one thirty-eight Wednesday. I just got this book today, and I'm sure all of us here remember Von Braun. You know, this rocket looks awful lot like something that Musk is building in South Texas. I have listed some issues here. The first issue, I'm just going to pass up to you guys because it could be considered hearsay, but I do believe it's an item you guys need to look at. We have trees growing over a sewer manhole. I don't know why. A tree growing in front of a drainage culvert or thing. We have streetlights not working, city-owned, been reported for a week and a half. Encore's not responding to streetlights requests to fix. You know, if we're going to pay for these lights, then maybe Encore could come out and fix them, you know? It just seems like a common thing. Recycle's not being picked up. Of course, this seems to only happen at my address. Dead trees around the city that needs to be cut down. Lack of a plan to use all the volunteers the city has. Oh, and on these Encore streetlights on Sandy Lake, every time it rains, those lights stop working. I have turned those lights in I don't know how many times. Perhaps it's time that we replace those lights, you know? There's been no response to the question I sent to a city official if I can trim the overhanging limbs from a neighbor's house that are sticking over the alleyway, because I'm not really sure where my property ends and, you know, and who has responsibility on that. And then there's Texas Ranger Cody Allen, you know, the only Texas Ranger ever to come from Capel. And the gas meter on Beltline Road next to the road, that, you know, if someone drives off to get at the gas meter and it go boom. And, you know, those new lights outside, under the trees, why did we put them there? They're not turned on. But just wondering. Can I hand this to you, sir?
Pass along to Ms. Owens, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
Sorry.
So I would like to invite Mr. Bowman and members of the Klan. Come forward.
Members of the Klan. The only Klan I know is y'all. In reference to-
So, council, for your consideration, and before I begin, yes-
If I could ask, if I could ask Mike to come down.
Can he hold the microphone for me?
If you want to.
So I do have one request of you.
Okay.
Your name is listed probably ten times on this proclamation.
Okay.
And I'd much rather call you Bo. Is that okay? Thank you very much. So whereas Bo Bowman was hired by the city of Capel as an administrative intern in nineteen eighty-three, and was promoted to assistant city manager in nineteen eighty-six with a focus on personnel, and has subsequently served as the director of administration and human resources since nineteen ninety-three, and whereas Bo led in the creation of the city's human resources department and helped develop the fundamental areas in purchasing, information services, municipal court, and others during his tenure, and whereas Bo, over his tenure as a public servant, participated in a number of professional associations related to public administration, I'm not going to read the whole paragraph. It's very long. He's done a lot of, he's done a lot of things. And whereas Bo's most lasting legacy to Capel is that of the city's first African-American administrator, he led the Capel Human Resources Department with a servant's heart and gave over thirty-eight years of outstanding service to the community and the organization through an unwavering commitment to local government. And whereas Bo has been pivotal in fostering an organizational culture that is rooted in equity, empowerment, and belonging while challenging the status quo and leading others to be a better version of themselves, and whereas Bo is a mentor to many individuals in Capel and beyond, and has always focused on helping to develop the people around him through accountability, honesty, and unquestioned loyalty. Now, therefore, I, West Mays Mayor of the city of Capel, do hereby proclaim October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, is Vivian Bowman Appreciation Day. It witnessed thereof, I have set my hand and caused a seal of Capel to be affixed this twelfth day of October, twenty twenty-one. So, council? Mayor, protem.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor to ask that we consider approval of a proclamation designating October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, as Vivian Bowman, Bo, Appreciation Day, and authorizing the mayor to sign.
I think everyone up there has seconded this. I'm going to go with the far end since the weight was over here, seconded by council member Hill. All in favor?
Lon Keane House Smith, Carol Nevels, Jen Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Bo, I don't even know what to say. This thing has just come short of everything you've done, and I know that you outdate everybody here by a long time. I've never, I don't think I've even-
That feels bad.
Well, look at it this way, you know, you've taught everybody here how to act, how to behave, how to be Capel. There's no fabric in the city that you haven't touched, and we all owe you a deep sense of gratitude and appreciation and a huge thank you.
I appreciate you, Mayor.
Let's start clapping.
You want me first, or are you going to go first?
And actually, the reason why I asked Mike to come down is because I actually came in the organization as a part of the city manager's office. In fact, my graduate degree is in a master's in public administration, so I was trained to be in the city manager's office. So I started my internship in the city manager's office, and I, at one time in my career, was an assistant city manager. And I know what it means to hold that responsibility of city manager. I never wanted to be one. I found out pretty quickly, I never wanted to be a city manager, but I understand the role, and I respect it wholeheartedly. And I would like to say to you, as the last city manager, I've been through six assaults, you have held the standard that we've set as an organization for the last twenty years. And I would say, in my own opinion, and I've been in here longer than anybody else, the last twenty years have actually been the golden years of the city of Capel, and I appreciate your position of holding that standard. And I would like to say thank you.
This is supposed to be about you, Bob.
Well, I mean, but as a student, I mean, my bachelor's was in political science. As a student of politics and public administration, I wanted to acknowledge the role because it's important. And that was my vision for how I operated in the organization, always from the perspective of the manager's office. And that was important, because I didn't have that view, I had this view. And everything that I've tried to do as a part of whatever I've done for the organization, which has been quite challenging at times, because I've had a lot of roles and a lot of responsibility, it has been with the spirit of being a caretaker. I actually can say, standing here, I have seen the evolution of a community from a rural, blinking headlight at Dairy Queen-
The one.
The one. To a cosmopolitan suburban city. And not many people have had that opportunity, but I can say that I have. And that has been what I cherish about this organization. That, and we have culture, but our culture has always been that we serve this community as best we could with whatever we have. And through the years, we've had a little bit now, last twenty, I could say were the golden years. And so I would like to say to the community, as well as to the staff, these are my staff members, my current staff, and Justin Vaughn is the assistant director, Michelle Perkins is our payroll analyst, Martha is one of our senior HR advisors, Amy is another senior HR advisor, and Nikki is our human resources coordinator. And I can say with the bottom of my heart, these people care about the organization, and that is to the core, and I respect you for that. They have taught me as much as I've taught them, to care about the organization in the way we should. And last but not least, clearly, I would like to introduce my beautiful wife, Taryn, thirty-five years this year, so, and my beautiful daughter, Ebony.
So, part of the story was, where did you meet your wife?
Well, I met my wife at- Well, I met my wife at the University of North Texas, my freshman, I mean, my actually first semester in school. So we've been together that long. I don't want to say what day.
Well, yeah, Bo, I know, is it the 22nd? What day is the bombay hours? Is the bombay hours the 22nd? So on the 22nd, you know, we're going to have an opportunity to honor you and everyone in the community is invited. You know, for someone to be here 38-plus years, to the mayor's point, every fabric, every thread in that quilt that's made up of Capel and the organization has your fingertips, your fingerprints. I mean, it's got your muscle, it's got your brains. And, you know, all along the way, Bo is a contemplative person, right, Taryn? Right? All right, I'm not saying anything is a surprise. A contemplative person. But, you know, the value, your value goes beyond anything that anybody can imagine. If you think about 38 years, I mean, looking around the room, people just don't do that anymore. Right? And so you've had an opportunity, as you said, to see the community grow. You've experienced different city managers. You've experienced a lot of different city councils, all the different types of meetings that have been held in the past, the types of growth that we've had in this community. So what we've done, you know, we've only got a couple more Wednesdays to go, but we're having story time with Bo. Because we want to hear.
I'll go for you.
Okay. Because we want to hear the stories because when you walk out the door, there's a tremendous amount of knowledge and experience that's going to be walking out that door, and we're all going to be lesser for it. But because of you, we're all better because of everything that you've brought to the table. And so for that, I say thank you.
Thank you.
No. By the way, I just feel quick for you. You married way up, buddy. Way up.
I'm going to paraphrase Bo real quickly, but I think it was clear that one of the little things I've been saying a long time, so let's keep the best interest of Capel at heart so the best days of the city are still in our future. And I think that was exactly what he's been working for the last 38 years for. So we're going to lose a tremendous asset there. All right. Item number eight is our consent agenda. Consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or passed council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. We are going to be pulling item C to be considered separately, so therefore consent agenda tonight consists of items 8A and 8B. Counsel for your motion. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item eight, consent agendas, items A and
Seconded by Councilmember Matthew. All in favor?
Long Keane House Smith, Carol Nevels, Jen Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item C is going to be presented by Ms. Hurley.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Thank you. Do you want me to read the item? Okay. Thank you. Item C is consider approval of an ordinance extending the moratorium against enforcement on section 6-15-3A, 6-15-4, and 6-15-5, 3, A and B, J through M, 4 and 8, Article 16, Business Regulations of Chapter 6-15, Temporary Signs for a Period of Time until December 31st, 2021, and authorizing the mayor to sign. As mentioned, we are here to talk about the temporary sign, the moratorium on the temporary sign ordinance. To kind of give a little background, I know you all heard this at work session last week, but I'll kind of go through this again. Due to COVID-19, businesses were required to shut down or limit their service offerings, and so many businesses did struggle during this time. And so the city did many things to help the businesses during COVID-19, and one of those was relaxing our restrictions on the use of temporary signs. City Council passed an ordinance placing a moratorium on enforcement of certain sections of Chapter 6, Article 6-15, which restricts the use of on-premise temporary signage. So you'll see on the next few slides some of the examples of signs that you, temporary signs that typically would not be allowed that have been used during this time. We've got the feather signs, examples of what we call kind of bandit signs. Those are the primary ones. Our most recent sign that has gone up is the inflatable hot air balloon that went up at one of our local businesses that is allowed due to the moratorium. So when we passed this ordinance in early 2020, it was set to expire on December 31st, but it was extended several times due to the continuation of the restrictions on businesses. So council did seek to extend that several times, and we just had our most recent extension expire on September 30th. And again, we had a work session, last meeting on September 28th, seeking direction on next steps. Prior to that work session, staff did send out or did create a business survey on temporary signs that was sent out to the businesses. We only had 23 respondents. It was a simple question of, did you use them? What types of signs did you use? And would the use of additional banners provide the same benefit that the temporary signs have provided? 19 of the respondents did believe that additional banners would provide the same benefit. Just a little bit about our banners, just so you're aware, businesses are currently allowed to have up to five banners per year. The grand opening banner is permitted for 45 days. All other banners are permitted for 14 days. The requirement of 15, there is a requirement of 15 days between each banner, and banners shall not exceed 40 square feet in size. They must be attached to posts or a building and must be secured not to flappen the wind. And again, banners must be on the applicant's property. If they want to put it on someone else's property, they have to receive permission from that property owner in order to put it on there. And they are required to get a permit to put out these banners. At the work session, last council meeting, city council gave direction for us to come back and bring an extension of the moratorium on enforcement that would run through December 31st of 2021. And the direction was that that would be the last time we would consider it, it would expire, and then we would go back to enforcement of our pre-COVID regulations after that time. So tonight, what's on the agenda for you is that ordinance to extend the moratorium through December 31st of 2021. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't specifically have any questions. I did want to sort of state, I think this is a great example of how city council a year and a half ago responded to a specific crisis that needed to be addressed, and we put the moratorium in place. My feeling at this point is that I am recommending that we don't approve the extension on the moratorium at this point. And I feel like it's time, we are moving back to some level of normalcy, and I'm concerned that we are getting away from what the original sign ordinances were put into place to do. Now, Ms. Hurley brings up a good point, that there has been a survey, that there may be, you know, there's some interest in potentially looking at our sign ordinance, and I think that certainly could be addressed by council if we chose to do that. But I think that is an additional step beyond what we're being asked here, which is just to not extend the moratorium. Let the sign ordinances go back to normal at this point. The sign ordinances are put into place. We have a very crisp-looking city as a result of it. If we need to address something further, we can do that at a later date. But I am recommending that we don't approve the extension. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Neville.
Ms. Hurley, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. And, you know, we had a very lively discussion last week in work session, and I think what we came away from that last week is that everyone sitting up here cares about our business community. You know, it is, you know, very important that we support our businesses. I myself am a small business owner as well. I happen to have property on Ditten Tap where I saw a lot of the signs and stuff were located. As a business owner, I feel like I can speak with a little bit of expertise, is that we do not currently use any temporary signage right now. We did at the height of the pandemic, when we, those fears were there, we, you know, we had temporary signs. We put up even city-provided banners that were, you know, to try to promote business and things like that. But, you know, as a business owner, I definitely do think that that, you know, I think that we are improving in those areas. My concern about extending the moratorium is we're losing the original focus of it, which was to promote commerce, where I'm seeing a lot of now hiring signs in place of those, you know, signs that would say, "We're open" and things like that. You know, I think, you know, I definitely understand that business isn't back to 100% yet, but I think everybody knows that Capel is open for business. And myself, along with Councilmember Carroll, you know, there is an aesthetic of this community, and I want to make sure we maintain that. That's what, you know, keeps our property values high. It keeps, you know, our city looking very clean, and I want to maintain that. So I am definitely, I'm not in favor of extending it this time, but I am hugely in favor of us taking a look at our banners and, as you suggested, that ordinance as well, and looking at relief in different areas for our businesses and hopefully try to improve that sign ordinance to where we can, you know, our business community will be happy with that. So that's what I'm in favor of doing that, but at this time, I don't think that we, an extension is in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Neville. Councilmember Hill.
I do want to say that I agree with Councilman Neville on considering perhaps adjustment to the signage ordinance, but I think we need to do everything we can to give our businesses a leg up. And even if it's now hiring signs, we are at a critical stage where businesses cannot hire enough people to sustain their business functions. You know, we see staffing at restaurants, they have difficulty finding people, and, you know, I don't think the aesthetics of Capel is going to be destroyed by temporary signs. They are temporary. But one thing I think we need to keep in mind is those signs cannot be in violation of other zoning ordinances, which are required parking, looking at that one that was taking up several parking places. If those were required parking spaces, then it shouldn't be allowed because then that creates other issues. But, you know, for a couple more months, it's not going to kill Capel. It's beautiful as it is. And, you know, I just hope one or two more businesses can stay open and weather this storm. We're almost through it, but not completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim.
You had your hand up before he nodded.
Yeah, thank you. So just want to say I agree with all of my fellow council members and to say, first of all, thank you for bringing this forward. And I, yes, at the work session last time, we had an opportunity to have a conversation, and I'm glad that we're also sharing our comments here because we want to make sure that we come across also as a unified council, right? And I think first and foremost is to say that we all support our businesses. And I know that our city staff in particular, you, Mindy, and your staff in your department has done a phenomenal job in making sure that you're working with our businesses, working with our local chamber in every way possible because of the, you know, not just in the peak of the pandemic, but also dealing with the ramifications and the aftermath that has occurred because of it and the fact that so many of our businesses have, you know, suffered. You know, I would say that I agree with all the council members that just spoke, with Councilmember Carroll and Nevels and Hill, in the sense that I think it's worth always looking at our sign ordinance. It's probably worth it. I know that in the past, we've had some restrictions, but we've also made some exceptions, and maybe it's time just to have a conversation about that. But as far as the moratorium is concerned, again, I support all our businesses, but I also feel that we're, you know, we're at a point where we're just, we're extending for two more months, and I'm not sure that that is currently necessary. I feel like a lot of the signs that are currently out right now have just taken a toll in the sense that, you know, they're not being maintained. And so I'm not even sure if people are using the signs to see whether a business is open or not. I think there's been other means of finding out whether, you know, there are businesses that are out there and kind of what their hours are, if they're hiring, or whatever their current situation might be. And I will admit, like, I guess, never imagined having anything that was large and inflatable in our city as well. And so all that to say is, I also don't support the moratorium. I think that, at the end of the day, I think we're going to have another discussion, right? Is that after December 31st? Or, no, it's done. Okay. So for clarification, yes, after December 31st, it's done. And so I guess I feel like I'm not really sure if this short stint does anything else. And if it does, great, but I just feel like it's not something that's currently necessary and that our city has done a phenomenal job of making sure that our businesses are thriving as best as they can under circumstances, and a lot of things are so out of our control currently. So with that said, thank you, and I also will not support the moratorium.
Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Well, as a small business guy here at the DISS, I feel pretty strongly, even though I haven't had a sign in my yard in four years at the cottage where we are, that without taking a poll of all of the small businesses, particularly retail businesses in the immediate area, we can't know what they're thinking or how they're using their sign. So I'm not going to be able to support the crisp-look city group on this particular point.
Thank you. Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. So I understand, I don't have a business here, and I understand some of us have business here, and it's great that if you're doing well. But basically, this moratorium is actually for the people that are struggling. And I think you had feedbacks that they said that it actually helped. And like Councilmember Hill mentioned, even if it's for hiring, they are in need of someone, and they are trying to attract people to get there, to whether to be working or to patronize their businesses. And at this time, we're talking about during the height of a year where business could really thrive and help them, or it could break them as well. So I'm with Councilmember Hill that we should support them as much as we can. Again, if you're doing great, that's fine, but those that are struggling are the ones that's asking for additional time to go ahead and put those signs up so they could do better during the holiday seasons.
Thank you, Councilmember John. Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. As a city, we should do everything we can to help our business, even if it's a temporary sign, help needed. A lot of cars go through Denden Tab, MacArthur, and Freeport, and if they see a now-hiring sign, maybe someone will stop and apply for a job there. So to me, I think we should do everything we can to help the business in our town. And with that, I'd like to make a motion. Like to move to approve agenda, consent agenda, item C.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember John? Just as a reminder, this is a vote far will be to extend the moratorium against enforcement of sections, which means that the signs would be a vote far would allow the use of temporary signs through December 31st. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Long, John, Matthew Hill in favor. Opposed? Keenan Smith, Carol Neville, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. That is the end of the consent agenda. I'd like to ask Ms. Tean and Mr. Hager to be prepared to present. This is Item Number Nine, Discuss and Consider Adoption of a Resolution Calling a Portion of the City of Capel, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bond Series 2015 for Redemption Prior to Maturity. Are Item B, a Resolution Authorizing the Use of Proceeds from the Sale of Bond-Financed Land for Authorized Projects and Enacting Other Provisions Relating to the Subject and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign. A little background before Kim gets into her discussion on the, on what we're actually looking for here tonight. This topic goes back close to 20 years ago, and it is all about Northlake. That involved council meetings that went well into the early morning hours. It involved many, many hours of negotiations. It involved a lawsuit. It involved many, many, many hours, hundreds and thousands of hours of staff time. The end result was the City of Capel ended up owning some water, some land, and a dam. And on October 1st, we successfully sold that back to the, the original owner that had right of first refusal, and that sale was consummated about 12 days ago, and the funds have been deposited. And the question that Ms. Tean is going to address is what to do with those. So Kim?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. What I would like to ask of you this evening is which option of the two options presented in the agenda item that council would like to move forward with? Item A is adopting a redemption resolution, which basically uses the proceeds from the sale of the land to redeem a portion of the 2015 bonds, and that portion is the portion that was used to refund the original issue. The other option, which is Option B, is you have, you could adopt a resolution that would direct staff to spend the proceeds on projects that are consistent with the original intent of the bond. That original intent, in general, is municipal improvements. Staff is recommending Option A, to use the proceeds to defees the bonds. And in general, the recommendation is to impact the debt portion of the tax rate, and that would occur beginning in fiscal year 2022, 2023, specifically by redeeming the portion of the 2015 refunding bonds. The amount needed to make the principal and interest payments on outstanding debt would be reduced. So the debt portion of the tax rate is established at a level that is necessary to make those principal and insurance payments each year. So reducing the principal and interest by using the proceeds to defees these, this debt would impact the tax rate for next year. And of course, that's assuming that the city's assessed value, assessed property tax values do not decline, and that we don't issue any additional debt. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And just to let you know, Jason Hughes with Hilltop Securities is with us also.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, you said the staff is recommending which option?
We're recommending Option A. If I said B, I'm sorry. Option A is the...
Well, we have Option 1 and 2, so I was just trying to clarify, you are...
The heading that they used has A and B, so I was trying to go by the heading rather than what's in the memo. It's Option 2.
Which is 2 for us. All right. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Mine's different. Well, mine's different, too. That's why I'm just trying to clarify. Us, it is Option B, correct? Or 2? 2?
Yes. Option 2 in the memo. Option 2 in the memo.
So, so the question on the table is whether we want to use the funds for refunding of the bonds or to use the funding for other projects. And staff's recommendation is to use the funds for the, for the refunding of the bonds, which is Option A on the, on the chart. I'm gonna, I will restate the motion. When the motion has been made and seconded, I'm going to restate the motion so that it's very clear for the record. Can I, can I see yours?
Well, it's not on there. It's just on the...
Oh, 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 okay. Got it.
It's on the memo.
So any questions or discussion? Matthew.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, my computer just went, screen, okay. In our memo, thank you, Mayor, in our memo, there are Option 1 and Option 2. Option 1 is what we have here as...
B.
B. And Option A is 2 in the memo.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you very much.
And staff is recommending A on the screen or Option 2 in the memo?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Carol.
Beyond A or B, I wanted to recommend, I think we should go ahead and defees the bonds, repay the debt at maturity, which is four years. I do think, if I'm understanding correctly, we could probably issue new debt if the need arose at probably a lower rate today, in today's market. Also, by defeating the bonds until the callable date, I think we lose, I think there's three years of continued payments that are, three years of maturities that we would not be paying, so you're going to save some interest carry there. Not to mention the requirement that we would have to use the funds, we didn't defees the bonds, we would have to use the funds, use the funds over the next couple of years, if I'm understanding correctly, we would have to find a...
Come on, you're fine.
Mayor and Council, Jason Hughes, Hilltop Securities. One thing I wanted to clarify, Councilman, we will pay off all the principal, but then the interest after that call date will be saved.
Okay, correct.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to make sure.
You're right. No, good clarification.
One clarification. So the amount received from the sale of the land is slightly higher than what we're predicting the payoff is. And so that differential would have to be used on municipal projects within two years.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I would, I would recommend that we go ahead. That's what we, that's what my recommendation would be. Thanks.
So I would, I would ask that, should you decide to make a motion, please state A or B?
And I will restate the motion in full, so that it's very clear.
Do I still have the floor? I will make, I will make the motion for Option A.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A.
Councilmember Hill. All right. The question before the council is the adoption of a resolution calling a portion of the City of Capel, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bond Series 2015 for redemption prior to maturity and enacting other provisions related to the subject and authorizing the mayor to sign. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Long, Keenan Smith, Carol Neville, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, the motion...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's that? Item Number 10. This has been asked to be rescheduled for the meeting on October 26th, as one of our staff members that is the architect of this is out ill today, and we would like to give her the ability to present this herself. So we will move on to Item Number 11. Ms. Owens.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Ashley Owens. I'm the city secretary. We are at that time of year where Dallas and Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors is asking for nominations for representatives. This is a routine request that happens every two years. I've included information in the packet from both districts, and unfortunately, I do not have a recommendation for you. This is simply procedural. So I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Did anybody send in a specific request to be nominated?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? In the past, historically, when this has happened, we have simply let the item die for lack of a motion.
That is correct.
Unless the council has a representative that they feel is qualified to fill the role, and then you're obviously encouraged to make a nomination. I believe the item dies for lack of a motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item Number 12. Mr. Lann.
Mayor, just two things. One, the Magnolia Trail, Magnolia Park Trail connection, we contacted them this afternoon. We're still doing some discovery, still taking a look at some things, and so it probably will not be, to clarify, it probably will not be on the October 26th meeting. So that's, that's going on. And then we'll be getting out information tomorrow, just letting the folks know. You've heard about the supply chain problem. Well, it's affecting our construction projects. We are having, our contractors are having difficulty with concrete actually getting delivery, and when they do get delivery, they are not getting the full deliveries. So we'll be giving some more information out to the public tomorrow and going forward as far as the projects. The one difference will be with Beltline, because there will be a concrete batch plant as part of the project, so we'll be, actually be in control of our own concrete production during that process. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mayor and council reports. Trick and treat on the trails will be Saturday, October 23rd, from 11:00 to 1, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The biodiversity center is excited to be, offer a special treat. Kids and parents alike are invited to dress up in their costumes and bring their goodie bags. Stations will be situated along the paved trail running through the nature park to offer plenty of space. Follow the one-way arrows on the path to visit each station. This is a teal pumpkin-friendly event. I don't know what that is. I, I'm going to have to ask someone with little kids around, I think. This event is free, and registration is not required. Item Number 14, Public Service Announcements Concerning Items of Community Interest With No Council Action or Deliberation. Anybody have any public service announcements? Seeing none, there was no action from executive session, and therefore, with no further business before the council, we are adjourned at 8:27 p.m. Thank you very much for attending.